I'm going to call this evening's October 13th, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. I'm Mary Power. I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, joined as always by my colleagues, Selectman Joe Fisher, Selectman Bill Ramsey, Town Administrator Tom Mayo, Assistant Town Administrator Michelle Montsegor. Before I read the notice, I would invite the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Bob Curley, to call the Advisory Committee to Order.
I'm trying to unmute you, Bob.
Okay. On behalf of the Advisory Committee, I'd like to call the October 13th meeting of the Advisory Committee to Order. And we will be adopting the same statement concerning remote meetings that I assume that Mary will be reading momentarily. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. At this time, I would ask that if anyone is recording the meeting, to please identify yourself either by using the raised hand function or if you are calling in, we will unmute the lines and we would ask you to please indicate that you are recording. And we'll just give a moment for those lines to be opened up. Okay, seeing none, the first item of business on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes for meetings dated September 1st, 2020 and September 15th, 2020. Are my colleagues prepared to move ahead with those minutes? And if so, I'd accept motions.
I'm prepared, Bill.
I'm prepared.
Go for it.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes dated September 1st, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, by roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you.
And I'll move to approve the minutes dated September 15th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Thank you. The next item of business is just, we had received a notification from the South Shore Country Club Committee, and this evening we have invited Country Club Committee Chair Christine Smith, who's also joined by Kevin Whalen, and I see the Chair of the CPC Larry Lindner is also on the call. Christine, I'm going to turn it over to you. I think you just wanted to give the Board an update on the status of your CPC application.
Sure. Thank you, Mary, and good evening, everyone. The Chair of the Country Club Management Committee, Christine Smith, I live at Two Park Circle here in Hingham. Couple weeks ago, the Board of Selectmen had a discussion briefly about the country club, particularly about the town pool that is located at the South Shore Country Club. Wanted to give you an update. Since that meeting, the Country Club Management Committee met last week on October 6th, and our group unanimously voted to defer our CPC application until next year's budget cycle for town meeting consideration in April of 2022. This decision was not made lightly, as it's always been our goal to have club improvements, including the town pool, completed for our 100th anniversary in 2022. Since the Board of Selectmen hearing approval on September 29th, it became obvious to our committee and Executive Director Kevin Whalen that COVID has had a detrimental effect on our timeline for designing and constructing two projects at opposite ends of the property at the same time, while still being able to effectively operate the club's core golf and restaurant business. A two-month delay in the hiring of an operating project manager for both the pool and maintenance facility, whose tasks include both creating the club's master plan and designing and constructing both the new maintenance facility and outdoor pool complex, resulted in a compressed timeframe for many deliverables needed for a successful town meeting vote in April of 2021. This approach will allow more time for thoughtful design and community input for not only our master plan but our pool facility, while giving town officials time to work together on an overall financing plan with more concrete capital figures and realistic timeline for both demolition and new construction. We appreciate everyone's patience with this project. We've been talking about it for a long time, and we understand folks will be disappointed. We're trying to deliver a project that the town can truly be proud of and get behind, particularly during these trying times. So, you know, happy to take any questions, Mary, if Board of Selectmen have any, but that's sort of where we ended up.
Okay, thank you. It's obvious that was not an easy decision for the committee to arrive at, and we appreciate that you've notified us of this. Bill or Joe, anything to add?
Well, I personally am looking forward to moving forward on that project when the committee is able and ready to proceed. Looking outside the window right now, it looks like there's a lot of swimming pools just being created naturally, but we need something far more organized. So looking forward to seeing your report and suggestions in the future.
Thank you. Bill?
No questions. Thank you, Christine.
Yeah, I would just echo Joe's comments. This is, this to me is not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And understandable that, and I would just point out that while this, the committee feels that this isn't the right time, the need doesn't go away. So with that, we would look forward to future conversations and potentially an application next year. So Christine and Kevin, thank you again for coming in.
Thank you.
Next item of business on the agenda is Locales Tacos LLC, doing business as Tacos E. Tequila. This is a request for a change of hours. I understand we're joined by Mr. Scott Golding, who is an attorney for the petitioner, and Mr. Brian McLaughlin, who is the manager. Michelle, if you could unmute those microphones and either Mr. Golding or Mr. McLaughlin, if you could please just introduce yourself and just give a little bit of detail for the Board as to the specific requests that you have this evening.
Yes, thank you very much. Scott Golding from Drow and Tatro Morgan in Hingham. As you said, we're seeking a change of hours for the liquor license for Locales Tacos, doing business as Locales Tacos E. Tequila at 6 Crow Point Lane. The Board approved a transfer of this license in May of this year. At that time, there was a discussion about the kind of the lunch hours, which were restricted based on a 1999 special permit that was in place based on a shared parking plan with the abutting property at Crow Point Village. Since the approval in May of this year, we were in front of the planning board. We got a site plan review as well as a, the issuance of a superseding special permit A3 parking determination, which actually increased the parking on-site from 71 spaces to 86 spaces and changed the configuration and circulation in the rear of the property. That special permit A3 removed the condition that didn't allow for the restaurant to operate prior to 5:00 on weekdays. So we're now seeking from you to be able to expand the hours to include weekday lunches to allow the restaurant to be open at 11:00. And the closing times would remain the same as was previously approved in May of this year.
Thank you.
And I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Joe, any questions for the applicant?
I was just looking at what the planning board did in terms of their special permit A3. Do we have, I can't tell if we have anyone from the planning board on the call who might be able to let us know if there are any special concerns. I think they did a complete job. I'm comfortable with it, but I didn't know if anyone from the planning board had any additional comments.
I don't believe I see anybody from the planning board who is on the call. Tom or Michelle, I don't know if either of you could comment.
Susan Murphy might be on the call. Maybe she might have an idea. Joe?
Yeah, I mean, if there were any legal questions, I mean, I just wanted to confirm what the hours previously were and what they're being changed to. So I've got it clear.
I'm just saying, she might be familiar with what happened.
Mr. Golding might be able to tell.
I can speak to that as well.
Sure.
So the hours that were approved in May of this year were starting at 5:00 PM on weeknights till midnight, and then Saturday from 9:00 AM till midnight, and Sunday 10:00 AM till midnight. We're just seeking to essentially allow the 11:00 hours during weekdays. As far as what the special permit and what was the previous restriction essentially said, there was no operation prior to 5:00 on weekdays, and that condition was removed. Is that the answer that you're looking for?
Yeah, yeah, because my understanding is that there's no change in the hours on Saturday and Sunday, and it's limited to the weekday change, which moved the hours, the starting hour to 11:00 AM.
That's correct, yes. And that was, that was a restriction based on the 99 special permit that has been superseded. And I spoke to Emily Wentworth throughout the process, and she said that it was superseded and that A3 takes precedent over it.
Great.
Thank you. Bill?
Scott, can you just confirm, how many more spots did you get with the A3?
Well, I don't know specific to this property. As you might be aware, the property came into, I mean, they're in separate legal entities, but it came into common ownership by the Colly family. So the entire site with Crow Point Village as well as the 6 Crow Point Lane, the number of parking spaces went from 71 to 86 spaces.
Okay. Well, I know that the planning board is tough with increasing parking spaces, so everything must have been in order, and he must have done a good job. So I have no problem with the additional hours, particularly in this time with everything going on. So nothing further.
Okay, thank you. And I had a chance to speak with Tom and Michelle earlier today, so I don't, I don't have any additional questions. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who has a question or wishes to make a comment about this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'd make a motion to approve the request of Locales Tacos LLC, DBA Tacos E. Tequila, for a change of operating hours to include weekdays from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second, and Bill, I would just note that 12:00 AM is also midnight.
Correct.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, which I believe is what many of us are here for, is a Public Safety Facility Presentation. We welcome and appreciate our colleagues from the Advisory Committee joining. I would also note that while the Public Safety Building Committee has not posted for this meeting, we are joined by a few members this evening. We are joined by Paul Healy. I see Mr. Joe Kelly. I see Mr. Telly Lauder. And my apologies if I have overlooked anybody else. Other members of the committee include Mr. Bob Garrity, who's the Chair, Mr. Bruce Macaloney, Ms. Donna Smallwood, Mr. Andrew Touche, with our interim Police Chief Dave Jones and Fire Chief Steve Murphy as ex officio non-voting members. The way this is going to work tonight is, in a moment, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Joe Fisher, who is the liaison to this. Joe, I didn't know if you wanted to have any opening comments, but then perhaps you could introduce members of the Kessel Boost team, who will be providing us with a presentation. Following the presentation, I would invite the Vice Chair of the Building Committee, Mr. Paul Healy, to make any additional remarks. We'll then open it up to questions from members of the Board of Selectmen, followed by questions from the Advisory Committee, and then questions from the public. So that's, that's a little bit of the lay of the land here. Joe, could you, I don't know if, again, if you have any opening remarks? Or if not, if you could perhaps introduce members of the Kessel Boost team?
Sure. So yes, I wanted to thank members of the Kessel Boost team for their incredible hard work in this, and members of the Public Safety Facility Building Committee. Mary has reviewed the committee members. I just got to say that their devotion to this project has been just outstanding. Their questions, and you're going to hear a lot of it from the work product this evening, nothing's being accepted, everything's being challenged, and the end result, I think, is a project that we can all be proud of. With us this evening, I believe, are two members from the Kessel Boost and Associates team, Todd Costa and Sean Schmiegel. Todd is the principal in charge. Just to put some perspective here, he's got tremendous experience specializing in the planning and design of public safety facilities buildings. He has worked on either feasibility studies or new facilities construction for the Needham Public Safety Facilities Building, Holden Public Safety Facility, Sharon Public Safety Facility, Harwich Police Station, Orleans Police Station, Middleborough Police Station, Bellingham Police Station, the Bourne Police Station, the Sandwich Police and Fire Facilities, and the Wellfleet Police Station. Sean, who's the project manager, has significant experience, including working with the Marshfield Police Station or on that facility, the Abington Fire Station, and even the Rhode Island State Police Barracks. So these folks really have their understanding of what's needed. They've been through this process a number of times with a number of different projects. And at this point, I will turn it over to Todd and Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. I can't really follow that up much. It's a great introduction. I will immediately hand over to Sean to kind of go through our findings that we went through for the committee relative to the Lincoln Street site in question. And any questions that do come up, feel free to ask.
And Sean, let us know if you need control of the meeting so that you can be sharing your screen.
Yep, most definitely. We have it. So you guys are one step ahead of me. So.
That's Michelle. She's a step ahead of us all.
All right, perfect. Give me one second here. So you should be able to see. Slide that out to the other window. Give me a second. So can everyone see the screen as of right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So again, thank you, Joe. That was, that was a great introduction. And I'll just jump right into what we've been doing over the last six weeks or so. So a quick summary, like I just stated, over the last six weeks, we've had many, many meetings, many, many conferences, weekly building committee meetings with the great building committee that's been selected by the Town of Hingham. Over the course of the last six weeks, we had a number of programming meetings where we sat and met with the Chief Murphy of the Fire Department along with Chief Jones of the Police Department, and really analyzed and discussed the needs and the necessities of each department, treated them separately, worked with our, we had a fire matic consultant, which we've been working with for the last 20 years, that specifically reviews and determines the programming related to the fire departments. So as we consolidated those programs, went through the analysis, we came up with a generalized square footage of a building. Over the course of these many weeks, we started at a two-story building, then we went to a three-story building and had many, many different iterations on the site, on the site plan, many different access points. With the great help of the town, we were able to work with the town engineer, also the consultant, third-party consultant, or traffic engineer, to get his confirmation on access points, not only ingress and egress locations in and around the site. Were able to gather a lot of information with neighboring communities, neighboring developments in and around the shipyard. And it's been a very, very collective effort with the whole entire team with this condensed schedule. We've been, we've been kind of providing a lot of live information with these weekly building committee meetings, but it's been, it's been very productive. And, and as you'll see tonight, is, you'll be able to see where we ended up over the last six weeks. So right now, on your screen, what you're seeing is obviously the shipyard site, which I'm sure everyone is quite familiar with. This is the corner of Shipyard and 3A. The rear obviously is Essington. So what we have here is the footprint of our, our Public Safety Facility. Real quickly, what we have is the fire apparatus bay right along here, and that is exiting out onto 3A. The visitor parking or visitor entrance coming down of Shipyard going along to Essington will be right along here adjacent to the MBTA parking lot. They would, they would enter in, turn, turn a left, and there's 45 parking spots here for visitor parking, in addition to some additional accessible parking spaces here. And the main entrance, the visitor entrance, will be right off of the visitor parking. Separate from that, we have a separate private staff-fire-police entrance at the corner, the rear corner of Essington and the border of Fresh Market. Again, they would come in, drive, take a left, come into a lower-level parking deck, if you will, because for those that you're familiar with the site, there's, there's quite an elevation change from 3A down to Essington. So majority or all of the parking at this lowest-level deck of 51 spots is police cruiser parking, covered police cruiser parking and along with additional police parking. Along the western part of the site, there'll be an access point or an accessway drive ramping up to the upper elevation, that is level of 3A. And this would be a combined upper-level parking of both fire and police, which exceeds the needs of both the fire parking and the fire parking needs and police parking needs. And up at this upper level from Essington, which we've been calling the main level, because that's the main level of, along 3A, is a combined, shared police and fire entrance. So that's completely opposite side of the building, separate from the visitor entrance, which is at the lowest elevation. But, you know, as you get, as we get into the floor plans, you'll be able to see quite quickly those differences. Lastly, the Sally Port, which is this structure at this point, police cruisers will come in through here, enter into the double-bayed Sally Port, and then deal with the detainees in this location, bring them into the building, and then exit back into the lowest level of the parking garage. Some additional items on this plan, these, it's diagrammatic, but these blue lines, red lines, and green lines are existing utilities that are feeding the shipyard. What these are sanitary lines, water lines, drainage lines that we, you know, had to avoid with building footprints. And this is all information that was gathered over the last five, six weeks as well. That was, that was per the survey that we were provided by the town. Again, this, this blue line here is another water line that is actually feeding the existing structure that's on the site. Some additional access easements along here, but this is another sewer and sanitary lines along, along this location as well. Through, in addition to the information that we've been gathering, not only from the programming, but also we've been doing a lot of site investigation with the help of some of the town, town-owned contracts as well. So over the course of the last two weeks, there's been, or actually three weeks, the town engaged environmental engineer to do surveying, and they did ground penetrating radar, GPR, which basically takes a camera, goes over the existing, that existing concrete slab, that foundation, or that existing slab that is on-site right now to further analyze and document any sort of underground utilities, potential underground tanks, piping, all those sorts, to help us further solidify some of the unanswered questions or some of the unknowns. In addition to that, we did a number of geotechnical borings, which helped us gain and gather information related to soils, ground depths of underground water, the types of soils related to the type, the fill, the sands, the aggregates, which helps us determine going forward what we need to do for development and design of the structural slabs and foundations and footings, again, to help us further develop and further understand the budget estimate as we'll get to a little bit farther. Lastly, the same engineers, the surveying that did the environmental, sorry, the GPR, the ground penetrating radar also did water wells or to further understand the type of saturation and soils in and around the site, not only at the slab locations, but also around the perimeter of the entire property in itself. So that's a very quick summary of what we've been up to for the last five, six weeks. I'll quickly go into the floor, sorry, site section. So again, for those that you're familiar with the site, which I'm sure most of you are, to the right side of this site section is just really quickly just trying to show the differences in elevation of 3A, Lincoln Street, on the right-hand side, and lower Essington. So what we've shown or showing is it's a three-story building, but from 3A side, it's a two-story structure. And from the lower side, which we've been calling it the lowest level, is a three-story structure along Essington. And this is also a quick section just to show the lower-level covered parking for police cruisers with, there would be a small entrance into the lowest level for the, for police access, and then the upper-level parking for combined police and fire with a combined staff entrance on this elevation. Going into the lowest-level plan, which again is along the Essington elevation, if you will. So this is the public entry. So public will come into those 45 parking spots here, accessible parking right along this location, entering into a large public vestibule, which would have, I won't get into too, too much detail, but designated elevator for the public, toilet rooms, officer in charge, records department for day-to-day office or day-to-day public access. There will be some interview rooms for police, along with a first aid and triage, triage space for police and fire, but mostly fire. A small lowest level here, Patrol Division review or access or viewing out into along Essington. This purple section is the detention area, detention zone, Sally Port, prisoner processing, access points, and these are blocked out as the jail cells and the remainder of the detention area. This is a small, smaller police private entrance that is accessed directly to the lowest level of the, for the covered police cruisers. Some additional storage units, this blue section here, which is, it's actually shown here in blue, but it is mostly combined, majority of it is police, but there is some combined building storage along with some, some fire storage as well. This lighter blue section here is the lowest level, which is underground underneath the apparatus bay, but this is, these are more additional support spaces, men's locker room, women's locker room. This white zone here is the building support, so your mechanical, electrical spaces, some general storage spaces. And in this larger blue zone here is, is kind of the centralized portion of the lowest level, which would be the evidence storage zone. Going up to the main level, again, which is, this is the upper-level parking deck here, the combined staff entrance, fire, police and fire. So staff would come in at this elevation, fire would take a right, and then this is the apparatus bay. So it's a three-bay apparatus bay. This is the decon and what is called the HUD zone for the fire, fire department. And then this is more the fire matic support, work zones, storage areas. For those that were on, we did do some building tours recently, and this was very similar to what was noticed. to what was noticed as of recently, over the last couple of weeks that we, not to backtrack, but there was some building tours that we took with the building committee over the last couple of weeks. Again, go back to the staff entrance, taking a left, this would go for the, this would be mostly for the police department. Investigation divisions, this, along this whole outside facing Essington, a small break room, a combined police and fire stairwell, and then more designated for police, but this would be a police, mostly a police stairwell with some off-times, a fire stairwell as well. This small stairwell here would be for the upper level of the fire apparatus bay, which would be a mezzanine, which you'll see on the upper level. Some more of the community support spaces for the police. Everything in green is a combined or shared space of both departments. So here are some additional interview rooms, wellness center for both police and fire, tactical training room, combined with the wellness center. This is a combined wellness, sorry, combined training, EOC or emergency operating operations center, which would not only be combined with both police and fire, but also with the public. And again, this is the designated, or additional designated elevator, machine room and designated stairwell off of the main lobby for public. This is a small access or view poured into the lobby below. Going up to the upper level, or the, so the third level along Essington, or the second level along 3A. So again, here is your apparatus bay that exits out onto 3A. This is the access of the mezzanine, which acts as not only a training area for the fire department, but also additional storage. To the left of the apparatus bay is the day room, so some of the living quarters, kitchen, restrooms, laundry room, living room, as I mentioned, and then the stairwell for the designated specifically for the fire department. There are six bunks here for the bunk, living quarters for the fire department, and then the zone beyond here gets us into the fire administration, some conference rooms, offices, designated office space for the fire department. This black square here is building support, so computer networking, some additional general storage, sorry, some mechanical space, electrical space on this floor here, and then to the rear side or facing 3A is all the police administration, the elevator as well, and continuation of the stairwell down from the lobby. Continuing on to some imagery with a lot of the iterations, we've gone many different paths, but where we stand today is kind of a combination of traditional, some vernacular that's already in the Shipyard, some industrial vernacular, but this is evolving, obviously, as the planning and the programming continues. But, you know, what we've been showing and demonstrating here is is a building facility that is, you know, works within this building type, and we feel that it fits within the Shipyard. So this, again, this would be the corner of, the four-way corner of Shipyard, 3A along here, high-profile main entrance signage going into the Shipyard. This would be the EOC or the training room, fitness and wellness area along here. As you can see, this is the apparatus bay exiting out onto 3A, the lower-level parking along Essington, main entrance, and then upper levels are the administration spaces along with the day room and living quarters for the fire department. Looking the opposite direction, heading northeast along 3A, this is the upper-level parking zone, the staff, combined staff, fire and police entrance, the day room for fire department, firematic support spaces, the three-bay apparatus bay, and this is the opposite end of the emergency operation center, the training room. This along here is the support office spaces and living quarters, and again, the rest of the second elevation, second level of office spaces. Last elevation, this would be the corner of Shipyard and Essington, looking off of, looking towards the three-story elevation along, towards Essington, but public main entrance at the lowest level, the patrol area for the police, and then the detention area for the police along here, that's the Sally Port, administration spaces on the second level. This is the, and then the third level is the, again, administration spaces and living quarters for the, for the fire department. Investigations, correct. This is the EOC training area, and then the double elevation of, or the double-height floor plan of the lobby. And then lastly, going through all of the floor plan iterations, the building imagery, all the site investigation that's been, that has occurred to date, we've been working with our estimator to develop a preliminary level of opinion and probable cost, which is a generalized estimate for where we stand today with the gathered information, which we've combined over the course of the last six weeks. So, not too good in to every level of detail here, but this upper portion here is a general contractor construction cost, so this is the building cost directly, approximately a fifty thousand square-foot building. Site work allowance built into, obviously, the level of infrastructure that is coming to this location and site investigation has already occurred. And then we've also built in a small design contingency built into the stage where we're at today for the last six weeks' worth of work, with escalation of potential bidding towards the January of 2022. Going down to the next line items here, the general contractor markup, so your general conditions and requirements, insurances, bonds, builder's risks, which is waived here, but, and then their general fee along with some owner's construction contingencies. We also allocate some funding for, or not funding, but allowances and into the operational opinion of probable costs for equipment costs that we foresee with projects of this scale and this size. So we look into the audiovisual costs, the FFNE, the furnishings and fixtures and equipment costs, loose equipment, generalized loose equipment for both fire and police. A lot to do with the IT equipment, networking equipment, computer equipment, telephone equipment, communications equipment, allowances built in for security and access control, traffic signaling, along with the contingency. Then furthermore, going into owner's soft costs or indirect costs with contingencies built in, so generalized A&E fees, architectural engineering fees, owner's project manager fees, reimbursables, reviews, back charges, moving reproduction costs, legal fees, some material testing, along with the last phase of, sorry, my mouse is not working, last phase of the indirect cost contingencies. So with all those tallied up, along with all the information that we've been gathering, just shy of forty million of thirty-nine, thirty-nine point five, five million dollars. That's all that we have to share with you tonight. We have a lot of other information forthcoming. I have had an earlier conversation with Tom Mayo regarding the, our feasibility study deliverable, which will accompany all this information that you just saw. You'll see all the previous iterations of floor plans, building square footages. You'll see all of our programming analysis that was done, the questionnaires that we went through with all of our many long meetings with each department head, department chief, sorry, along with all the site investigation work that, these reports that we've gathered for geotechnical engineers, along with the site surveying and the soil investigation work that we've gathered and the town has gathered over the last six weeks. So hopefully I didn't go through that too quickly. We're more than happy to answer any questions, I'm sure there are a few.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before I invite a member of the building committee to speak, Tom, I didn't know if if you wanted to just jump in here to comment on anything that was part of this presentation.
The one thing I would just point out, and I think, I think a lot of people might be asking themselves the same question, I want to make sure that it's been clearly answered. In the spring, when we presented this as a potential project to town meeting and requested the funds to do this initial study, we had projected the cost of the facility to come in at some twenty-two or so million dollars. It's coming in at thirty-nine, five. There's a number of reasons for that. You know, I could give the caveat that it was an estimate at the time. It was best, it's the best of what we knew at the time. It was less than a year ago, but a lot of has happened since then. The, you know, it's difficult to, sometimes, to estimate out on projects like this, but at the time, we hadn't done any programming estimation. We're looking now at part of what KBA has been able to put together for us as an understanding of what this facility needs in order to meet the town's future growth needs. That's a big, that's a big deal. We don't want to build a public safety facility that we outgrow in five years. So, that portion of the conversation had not yet occurred. You know, we're talking about building this facility out at least a year. If we were to get there, at least a year later than we were projecting back in the spring. So there's a number of things like that, number of places where additional costs crept in that we had not, we did not have information for to feed that early estimate. So, while it is a higher number, significantly so than what we had anticipated, this is obviously an informed estimate where the other one was not, so.
Thank you. I do note, before I invite my colleagues to ask questions, I do note that we do have a quorum of the Public Safety Building Committee on the line. Mr. Garrity is also on the line, so in, because the building committee did not post, we can only have one member of the building committee participating in this meeting because otherwise it would be considered an open meeting violation. It's my understanding, Paul Healy, are you going to be speaking on behalf of the building committee? Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, Mary.
Okay, Paul, you know, just again, before Joe, Bill, and I and our colleagues on the advisory committee ask any questions, I didn't know if you had anything to add to the conversation at this point on behalf of the building committee.
Mary, so before Paul speaks, I'm going to ask him to focus on three things. First, Paul, and I think it is also okay if Bob speaks as well, I think too, we'll still not violate the open meeting law if, in fact, Bob, who's the chair, wants to speak as well. But the three things I'd like you to focus on, at least initially, is first, why do we need a new fire station to replace the existing north station? Second, why do we need a new police headquarters? And third, if you could give us a summary as to the findings of your committee as to whether or not this site is a feasible location for the new public safety facility.
Sure, thank you for that, Mary and Joe. Prelimarily, I'd like to thank KBA for the work that it's done. This has been a very satisfying effort, and they've been extremely responsive to us. I'd also like to thank my colleagues that I've had the privilege and pleasure of sitting with on this effort. Everybody's been in attendance at the meetings, that participated. There's a lot of positive and substantive input from each of us. And to answer your question directly, Joe, one of the things that we did from the outset was we took a tour of the facilities in question, which included the Hingham Police Department, which is located up at Town Hall. Chief Jones and Lieutenant O'Shea were with us, took us around, highlighted some of the issues. The place is unsuitable in large part for a lot of the work, the critical work of the police mission, and clearly is bulging at the seams. It's outgrown its use, and something simply has to be done. I could get into the granular aspects of it. But, there is going to be a video that HCAM has put together with Tom's assistance, he can speak to that. But it would give the public a chance to see what we're talking about, you know, behind the statements that are being made tonight. The fire station, which I refer to as West Hingham, some people call it North Fire, but we took a tour through there and I have to say that
Hello? Hello?
That was very sobering to see that, and the need for a new fire station is acute, ladies and gentlemen. We all went to the site at 335 Lincoln Street to get a sense of it. You know, it's one thing to look at a picture on a screen, but it's quite another to go on the ground and get a feel for it. So, we did the police and fire, we did the site, and then we have all gone to the situative public safety facility, which is a combination of the police and fire mission in that town. And although it's different in some ways, we looked at the common themes that were built into the design and architecture and use of the station to get an idea of what might be good here. Some of my colleagues have gone to the Needham facility this past weekend, and we anticipate that there'll be additional tour for the rest of us to go as well. So with that in mind, we worked with the consultants. As Sean Schmigle pointed out, there were some iterations, we continued to evolve. We've got the very able assistance of Jeff Dirk, who's a well-respected traffic engineer, who's worked with the town on numerous other projects, Gabe Crocker's input was substantive as well. And what happened was it evolved into the iteration that was presented to you tonight, which reflects the traffic circulation concerns, access to 3A, Essington Drive, the parking capacity of the building, because as you know, if you're underparked at the outset, it's going to be a problem no matter what. So, I, that was addressed with Chief Jones and Chief Murphy. We saw the programming needs incorporated into the interior design, the hot zones for the fire and what that means and the impact on the quality of life for our firefighters, the concerns of the police with respect to detention, Sally Ports. At the end of the day, in the time that we've had and we've met regularly, and we've generated minutes which have been approved, presumably they're published somewhere on the town website, but just showing what we've done, we concluded last Thursday that the project was feasible. And so, Bob would be saying this tonight, but he's a little bit laid up, but he's done a fantastic job shepherding us on this project. As some of you may know, he's been involved in a lot of projects in the town in the past, and I can clearly see why, he really does a great job. So, that's where we are, and I'd be happy to take any questions, it's been compressed. But everybody has stepped up to the plate and I think addressed the timetable that we're facing and continues to remain committed to the project.
Oh, I neglected to ask just at the beginning of your comments, and thank you. Since you are speaking really as an individual citizen tonight, could you just please give your address for the record?
Sure, my name is Paul Healy, 209 Main Street.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. So we have been advised by council that it is, Paul will be speaking on behalf of the building committee this evening, and thank you, council, for that. Joe, at this point, I don't know if you have any questions for the committee or comments, if you want to wait to hear from for the committee or comments, if you want to wait to hear from Bill and I. How would you like to proceed?
Well, I think it would make sense to have Bill and you ask questions, give comments. I know that Sean and Todd might be sick of hearing from me as well as the other committee members, so it'd be nice for them to hear from the other two selectmen. And I just want to add my thanks to Paul's in terms of the hard work of the committee and to thank Paul as well. He's really done an incredible job, as has the Chair, Bob Garrity. So I will defer to my fellow select persons.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, thank you. I want to begin just by thanking the committee as well. I know that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this since the committee was constituted late this summer. So appreciate everybody's work on the committee. I know we had put together a really impressive crew, and I thank you for that. I think, I think these questions are more for KBA. So, and my first question, probably my most important one here is, can you just go over how the fire apparatus are going to leave the facility and re-enter the facility after a run? Maybe the diagram come back up?
Sure. That's, it is a great question. You know, often what's, what is done with modern-day fire stations is called a drive-through bay. We have, because of the site constraints, a little bit more of a challenging site, but one of the things that we wanted to consider is obviously 3A is fairly well-traveled. So taking advantage of some of the access points that Sean had mentioned earlier, one of the things that we try and do is separate the departments, you know, access to the site, you know, so where police cruisers, personal vehicles are coming in, where apparatus is responding from the site, and then also where personal vehicles. So as Sean alluded to earlier, we're coming directly out off the apparatus apron, straight onto 3A. However, upon return to the station, they can actually come around from Essington, enter in at the rear of the site, drive up. That drive is actually at an incline that works for the apparatus, and the apron has been set dimensionally at a length of 90, 80 to 90 feet. So our building, our apparatus bay does not start until 80 to 90 feet off of Route 3A. What that allows is for the longest piece of apparatus, the often known as the quint or the ladder truck, is able to basically make a small K-turn, if you would, where they, they return to the road, or they come along the return road, they drive out towards 3A, may have to just ease their nose into the road a little bit, and then they're able to back in, back, return back into the apparatus bay. That was a very long way to explain it, but it was also very intentional in our process to make sure that minimal interruption would need to happen upon return of the vehicles back to the station. If we were unable to accommodate that access road, then the returning apparatus would actually have to swing into the apron, come almost back out into the street, and then return back into the, into the bay. And one of the things that we've often been told by mechanics for apparatus is slow maneuvering turns, i.e., you know, that rapid U-turn, if you would, cause heavy wear and tear, not only on the tires, but on the equipment itself, generating more costs. So we want to, we consciously made an effort to try and reduce that on the apparatus for the city, for the town as well.
Would the site allow for open bay movement? And I just, the reason why I ask is, you know, it, I hate to have to see the vehicles nose out back onto 3A, back into the bays.
We explored that. Again, another great question. We did explore that, and with Jeff Dirk's input, the best option is to bring the apparatus directly out onto 3A. Because of the change in grade, that is not become conducive to a drive-through bay. Even, and I started to talk to this earlier, and I apologize, I didn't finish that thought, but even most, most of the committee members that went to Needham with us last Friday will, could share with you that even though Needham has a drive-through bay, they don't utilize it as drive-through. 90% of the departments that we work with, the drive-through bay is actually frontline vehicles exit out onto the main road, and second-line vehicles exit to the rear of the site and come around the, come around the station through the parking lot. It's not often, if any, on a, typically what would happen on a four-bay station, or in this case, a three-bay station, one bay may be allotted to a drive-through, which would allow for the ladder truck to be driven through the bay. But often, they don't, most departments don't utilize it. It's just having the front and rear bays allow for the greater amount of flexibility as equipment changes and the mission modifies for the fire departments.
My second question is, you know, having done some office relocation work in my legal career, I know that I'm always mindful when you build a site like that, you always have to allow for growth of an organization. And I'm thinking particularly with the potential changing nature of police work. When you went over the site, the site seems to have a lot on there and to seem pretty busy. Can you go over where potential growth would be? For example, if we did have to change the size of our police department or the size of the fire department?
Again, what we've tried to consider is, what you're looking at right now is kind of the maxed size. We are working to, you know, continuing to work, and as going into the next stages, that effort will be, you know, put forward even greater to shrink the size of the department, make the building, and that sounds bad, but not shrink the operational space, to shrink the corridor space, make less circulation, make the building more efficient. By creating more efficiency in the building, we're going to create greater opportunities for growth outside of the building and that future expansion. As of right now, we have a couple of areas that we're considering. The lower half of the upper parking deck could be developed into a structure, excuse me, reverse that, the upper half of this, what you're seeing on the plan. That way, you'd still be able to use parking in front of that, as well as the area that's in between, the green space between the parking structure and the, the public safety building.
Also, also built into the programming questionnaires and the program that we had done with Chief Jones and Chief Murphy, there are additional office suites, office spaces. There's meeting spaces that directly could be turned into office spaces if that were to happen. We've, we've provided a strong number of jail cells for that potential growth in the town. But, you know, in general, like Todd just said, it's, we've proven the, from a feasibility standpoint, we're trying to prove and show and alleviate any, any potential of, of potential growth, but we're showing a footprint, as much parking, you know, a sufficient amount of parking, probably even, even on the high end of parking that's even needed for the, for the current needs. So the parking right now, we have, we're showing 137 parking spots on the entire site, based on our discussions with Jeff Dirk, the traffic engineer. You know, even with a 10%, contingency, you know, about 115, 120 spots would be necessary for this project. So right there alone, just alleviating some of those parking spaces is a potential part of the growth or expansion. And like I mentioned, you know, that just gives more property, if you will, to place additions if necessary in the future.
There is also, even something that we alluded to talk about earlier, as part of the initial, and happened very quickly in this instance, phase was we issued a questionnaire to both departments to give, to get trends for the community. Population trends, arrest trends, staffing trends, both male and female, so on and so forth. And what that does, at least from the police side of things, we've got algorithms based on number of arrests per year, population growth, number of calls, et cetera, et cetera, that they, this algorithm helps us to project out what's the department, what's the anticipated department size. So that gives us a little bit of insight, so that when we sat down with a department to say, okay, this is about where you should be in X number of years, I think it was 20 to 30 years, is that tend to, and it's a, it's not an end-all-be-all, it's kind of a cross-check, so that we can make sure that we get that little bit of extra, you know. If that's one more seat in the investigations division, or if it's, you know, one more command staff, or a few more patrol sergeants, something of that nature, it allows us to anticipate that now, so it can get planned into the building.
Bill, you all set? Okay. I would just echo my thanks to the building committee and also Sean to you and Todd. Couple, a couple questions. This is a 50,000-square-foot building. How does that compare in size to the, to the total square footage of the current police station and the current North Fire Station? In other words, how much, how much larger is this facility than the sum of the two it's replacing?
That is a good question.
Good question.
We haven't crunched that number yet, but that, we can do that.
I think that would, that would just be helpful, helpful to know. And as, I guess the other thing I wondered about is, you know, I drive by that Situate facility fairly often, and, you know, I don't know how big that is, but I also just wonder how, how the size of this facility compares to comparable communities and what it means in terms of like population or number of firefighters or officers. I'm just, I'm just trying to get my arms around the size of the facility and understanding that we, we want to make sure that we have enough room to grow into, but also making sure that, that we're not overbuilding. I don't, I don't know if that's been any part of the work, or if that's work that will come in the next phase.
That was, so I can help answer that. That was a question that we received just earlier today. We do have those, just not right at our fingertips, so I will collect that data and share that. We had to do a very similar instance, and it's a challenging question from the aspect of, and what we've, because how do you compare it? Do you compare it to number of sworn officers? Do you compare it to population served? What we found is actually that the best comparison thus far is actually the size of the department to the population served. So
Okay.
Gather those numbers and just confirm that they hadn't changed since the last time that we checked them, and get those out to yourself.
That would be helpful. You know, I think for the community, you know, in Hingham, we've, we've, the last couple of big projects, we've done our school projects. And under, under the state program, the MSBA bases the size of buildings on enrollment. And so they, it's kind of an equalizer, and it gives communities assurance that schools are being built to support, you know, an enrollment figure over 50 years. And it's a helpful thing. And I guess the other thing I wondered is, are there any sort of standards or metrics that guide, you know, the amount of space? Like, for example, you know, whether it's the number of bunks, or the number of, the number of cells in the detention area? How do you, how do you figure that out?
That goes right back into that algorithm that we were talking about, I was talking about earlier. It's based on, you know, number of arrests per year, population served, number of calls. Not only does that give us, you know, potential growth for the police department, but it also, you know, number of calls for the fire department, so that they can anticipate whether they're going to need to have, you know, four firefighters, or six firefighters, or eight firefighters going into the future. Excuse me. So the, the algorithm, and that's all confirmed with our sit-down discussion with both departments. And we go from there. It's, you know, what's the mission of the department? What is your overall objective? And I'll use the example that you gave of the detention cells. Is this, currently you have usually, there's, any department we work with, there's a few, we call them dead cells, they can't be used because of risks. Does the number of cells that you have active right now work for you? Can you get by or continue to work with this? Do you need to go back to that original number before you had to lose those additional two? Or do you need more because you're finding a greater influx? And then we kind of right-size it to what the department's demand is, both current day and usually in the case of most chiefs, and yours is no exception, the life of their career kind of comes into that discussion as well as to what they've seen.
Thank you. You know, I, I just make a couple of points before I ask Joe if he has any additional questions or comments. I just think it's worth all of us reminding ourselves that the 2015 North Fire Station Building Committee, after about a year's worth of work, concluded that renovating the North Fire Station wasn't viable. Basically, the cost and the ability to expand on that particular footprint was, was not creating a solution that was workable. And so, you know, that, at that point, that's when the town embarked on trying to look for alternate locations for the North Fire Station. Obviously, geography plays a part in that because of the call, because of the area it services. And, you know, the board in the town spent over three years evaluating different sites. And when this one became available, that's what led to the Warren article at this past year's town meeting. I appreciate what you said earlier, that, you know, what, what you're trying to do right now is to just assess whether this, this site can, can support the potential level of activity that a combined, you know, auxiliary fire station and police station would require. And it sounds to me like your approach right now is to err on the side of more activity, so that we can assess whether the site is feasible, which is kind of the decision before us right now. I would just point out, and I'm, I'm saying this for myself as well as all my colleagues, I found myself, you know, starting to, you know, count bunks and starting to look at all that detail. I think we have to also remember that if, if town meeting authorizes the purchase of this land, the building committee, along with Kesselboos, will spend the better part of the next year really on the design. And that's really when we're going to get to kick the tires and really push on, you know, how big is it, you know, a lot of these different details. So I say it as much for myself as everyone else, that the decision before us tonight, or the decision before us over the next few weeks, is whether it is advisable to move ahead with the purchase of this property to allow us to continue to explore it. So the design may change, but I would also just say that I appreciate the approach that you've taken, which is to look for the highest intensity of use, because I think that's important when we're looking at feasibility. Joe, before turning it over to Bob Curley, any questions or comments?
No, I think you and Bill have asked the right questions, and I would yield to our esteemed colleagues on advisory.
Okay. Mr. Curley, take it away.
Thank you. And thanks to the building committee, and thanks to KBA, and to all of the people that have put so much effort into this. have put so much effort into this. I think some of the questions I have may be a little beyond the scope of tonight, but it, it seems to me that the status quo is not a particularly acceptable alternative, and that the site that we've been talking about presents some economies of scale and efficiencies. And it would seem that the other alternative is multiple construction sites to accommodate the needs. And I, I wondered if anybody had put any kind of number on the order of magnitude of doing separate projects, as opposed to this one project, would be in terms of savings.
I don't think that was within the scope of KBA. Tom?
So, yeah, so, thank you. I did ask Todd if you wanted to speak to that briefly. And you're right, Mary, it's not within the scope of what they were asked. I did ask that question. We did have a brief conversation with it. Todd, if you want to speak to what you told me?
I can. It's, there are, the simplest answer to that is absolutely, it is more upfront costs. Not only is it potentially, unless you have multiple town-owned sites that you can look at, that are within the right, you know, area for the fire department, or police department, there's additional land acquisition. But even if you take that out of the equation, let's just talk building, because that's really what we, we focus on, is there's redundancy in mechanical systems, there's redundancy in some of the spaces, all of the, if you remember from the floor plan, all the green spaces are shared. So, you would basically be maybe not duplicating that pound for pound, but pretty close to it. The other those areas, you know, a thousand square foot training space, just to throw a number out there, it's not one of the areas from the building itself, but a training space that might be a thousand square feet, would still be a thousand square feet in the fire, as well as a thousand square feet in PD, because they both have similar needs for training. And then to relocate from a, from their facility would, would take away from some of their, like, for the fire department, their ability to respond. So there's that aspect of, of just square footage duplication. Then you get into mechanical systems, where, you know, the redundancy in mechanical systems, because they're essential facilities, there needs to be redundancy inherent. So, it, for example, boilers, you wouldn't have just one boiler at each facility, you would have two boilers at each facility, whereas opposed, when they're combined, you might have three, or even it might be the right size, that it would only be two. Again, just examples. The biggest one in some of that is actually the, the service, and the electrical service, and the emergency generator. You know, emergency generator, both facilities have to run, no matter what instance takes place. So you need to have an emergency generator for a duration of time. By combining them, you may go to a larger generator, but it may not be equal to in price of buying two. That's just the initial cost. Then you get into the operational costs of, basically, the building is, both buildings are going to be operating 24/7, because of less equipment, because of, you know, a more efficient service, the operational costs over the duration of the, the life of the project is going to be less to the town as well.
Okay. I have, I have one other question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. And that question is, presumably, at the end of this project, were it to be approved by the town, that the North Fire Station probably is a property that could be sold by the town? And this may not be a KBA question either, but does anyone have an idea of what the fair market value of the North Fire Station property might be?
Thank you, Bob. Mary, would you mind if I take that? Thank you. So, Bob, you and I obviously are thinking along the same lines. I have had conversations along these lines as well, although I would point out that the last time I was responsible for making an estimate, a year in advance of something, we can all see what happened. But I will tell you that the, the early conversations around the value of that property are in the ballpark of a million dollars.
Okay. And I'd like to offer thanks to Nancy McDonald and her team of liaisons that have worked so hard on this project. And at this point, I turn the floor over to my Edcom colleagues for any questions they may want to ask.
I see Brenda's hand is up, Bob. Brenda Black.
Michelle, can you unmute Brenda?
Thank you very much for the great presentation, because I think it's possible to picture what, what may be possible on that piece of land. My only feasibility question is with regards to the sudden rainstorms that are part of climate impact these days, and the one that knocked out Norwood Hospital this summer, because this looks like it's the same layout, where there's a lower ground level with a certain amount of equipment, and also a parking lot at the lower level. Both of those were totally flooded out, and that hospital is still out of commission. And I know as a person who drives in Hingham, being at that Shipyard Drive stoplight, waiting to turn onto 3A, you're very aware of the road coming down from Talbot's, which would be a great sluice way for that kind of rainwater coming down the hill, which is what I think happened in Norwood. So just wondering what the thinking was about how to protect that fleet of police cruisers on the ground level, and all of the equipment in the ground level?
Mary, I would suggest you ask JR to help, to try to be able to answer that.
Chair, chair?
Yes. Hi, Mary. And I, that was something that Selectman Fisher brought up early to, to make sure that we looked at, and, and make sure that, you know, in terms of feasibility, we have to make sure that this facility can stay operational. So, we compared the ground elevations, both along, along Essington, and, which is the low side. And the Essington Drive is over three feet above the projected 2070 climate change flood area that was projected by Kleinfelder in their 2016 report. So, they are well out of the projected flood zone, and I would have no qualms saying that the facility where it is, where it would be, were it to be sighted there, should be able to operate effectively in the worst storm conditions throughout its operational life.
That includes water coming down the hill, not just coming in from the sea?
Anything that would come down the hill would actually be absorbed by the MBTA parking lot.
Yeah, I think I can help with this question from Ms. Black. Basically, the apparatus's apron is almost across from the street you have in question, or you've been mentioning. We have a slight stagger, but the other part, which is tough to see, is there is a three-foot change from the roadway up to the apparatus apron. So that, and we have to control all of the water from our site, through discussions with Jeff. None of the flow from that apron is allowed to go out to the site. That would kind of work in reverse as well, so that that would be redirected. But if anything did come up and over, there will be basins there to catch and redirect that flow.
And to keep it out of the police cruiser collection area.
Okay.
I see Libby has her hand up as well. Michelle, could you unmute her? Thank you.
Yep. I just have a couple of questions. One is, I know I've heard about the lights, and the ability to control the lights, and if in fact another set of lights would need to be added. So I wonder if somebody could just respond to that?
Think the chief might be the best person to answer that one. Chief Murphy?
So, the, the town engineer, or not town engineer, the town consultant and KBA have looked at the lights, and the, you know, projected, you know, plan would be to add another light that would only be controlled by the fire department, or actually, you know, make it obviously for the police as well. And the way that that would work is that when the apparatus left the station, then they would trigger that light, which would probably be closer down in front of Fresh Market, almost, so heading, you know, away from the intersection of Shipyard Drive and Lincoln Street. So it would trigger that, and it would trigger the light at Lincoln and Shipyard at the same time, thus allowing the fire apparatus to make a left or a right out of the building, and basically completely blocking, you know, traffic in both directions. But, you know, as it was, you know, asked on a previous meeting, that would not be part of the regular, you know, routine of lights up there. It would just be like an emergency vehicle, or exiting type of routine, so.
Okay. So that new light, then, you said would trigger the other, it'd be between the other two sets of lights, and would trigger those?
Yeah, that's what the town consultant on it was, you know, recommending, and it's common, you'll see that in some fire stations, you know, that they have that type of setup before.
Okay. And one other question that's kind of two-pronged is, you know, as we talk about the feasibility for that location, I looked at, you know, the presentation that was made, and it shows the, the as-is appraisal at 3.7 million. It's being purchased as-is. So the 3.7 million, but we're purchasing it at 5,475. And I just wonder how that 48% premium on that appraisal was sort of justified when the PNS was signed?
Um, is that you, or is that Susan Murphy? I know she's also on the phone.
It might be a combination, but I can, I can take a stab at it initially, and she can backfill as needed. So, that's right, Libby, that's exactly right. The appraisal came in a year ago at 3.7 million, well, 4 million less the amount to clear, which obviously has to happen, with making the, the actual value at 3.7 million. And then the, and then the, the sale price at 5.475 million. A couple of things I would point out. One is, we had, we had been told, and we believe that it's credible, that the seller had a second buyer, so that added a premium to the, to the site. Aside from that process, I will point out that the town has been looking for a site in an area where that the North Fire Station operationally needs to be for several years, upwards of five years. We've approached many sites, some have been researched, others have been approached for, for sale. Nothing has come up that was a viable, that was a viable location, that was something that somebody was willing to part with. So, when this became available, it was clear that this was a site that worked operationally. Is it actually optimal operationally? What with the site right there, the light right there, as Chief Murphy pointed out in his ability to control traffic on 3A, and be able to respond to the population that's, that's driving the geographic needs of that, of that side of town, from the fire perspective? So, there is a lot of, there is a lot of operational reasons why this site is important. That drives our need. It doesn't, it didn't drive the price. I think what drove the price was that the seller had multiple bidders.
Okay. And then- Susan, Libby, I just want to invite Susan Murphy to, to add, because I know she's done some, some work, and, Susan, what would you add?
Yeah. In addition to what Tom was saying, is there's the, the factor of what's happening in the industrial market. So in my private practice, I do a significant amount of work with industrial buyers and sellers, both in New England and throughout the country. And, you know, when Tom and I was talking about this in the last couple of weeks, in anticipation of the question, which is a reasonable question, I was looking at what I know to be true, from how busy I am in my office, but also from what's going on in the greater Boston industrial market. And it's showing growth in that sector, which everyone who's been stuck at home ordering everything online for the last eight months can tell you. So, the, the demand for industrial parcels, particularly this one, which is an as-of-right use, which you don't even need a special permit unless you're building above a certain threshold, is, is a very high demand. And so, given that the town is not kind of just the average buyer who's out there to see what they can pick up in the market, but is a very location-specific buyer, and you, you factor in everything that Tom spoke to, and the fact that there have been inquiries into the permitting boards, or the staff to the, to the permitting board on the second floor over the last year, year and a half, of multiple people calling, inquiring about this parcel, what could be done there, what, what was allowed as of right. We have a sense of the interest that this site was attracting for potential buyers, which was part of the reason that, based on that information that, you know, we were getting from other sources, that there were credible competing offers. So, you know, to a certain degree, from the town's perspective, it's, you know, it's not so much, well, you know, listen, there's plenty of land up in the South Hingham Industrial Park, let's, let's go make a better deal there. When you look at what the needs of the town are for the service area, you combine it with wanting to be able to get directly right out onto a main road, not wanting to cite it in a single-family residential area. When you put all of those together, it, it made it more, kind of, you know, put the town in a, in a position with both the, the demand for this location, and the town's needs, that it was going to drive up the, the price.
And, Libby, if I could just add, you know, anecdotally, and Paul Healy remembers, because we were on the board together, when the Hingham Mutual site went up for sale several years ago, that was appraised, I don't know, I think the appraisal value was like, Paul, it was like in the high threes, or, I don't, I don't remember, it was maybe around four or five. And the town made what we thought was a very competitive offer. We put in an offer for just over $5 million. And that offer was out there for two years, and the seller never responded. And we'd make the offer, and we'd make the offer, and people may recall, we were talking about that Hingham Mutual site as a site for the senior center, we would house H-CAM over there, we would do a lot of different things. When that parcel actually sold, it sold for over $11 million. So, you know, just, you know, I, I know we look at these appraisal amounts, and, and obviously, those are important, and we take our fiduciary responsibility to the town seriously. But I would also point out that if, if any of us go in and look at the appraised value of our houses tonight, and called a Realtor tomorrow, my guess is that Realtor would say, you could probably command 30 to 40% higher than the appraised value for your property. And I think what we're seeing is that that same dynamic is playing out with, with these larger commercial parcels, particularly for the reasons that, that Susan has cited.
Okay. And then just one other final kind of addition to that, is that I wonder if we have received any, given that we're paying such a high premium for the property, and, and knowing in the past we had, you know, Chapter 21E issues downtown Hingham, where we purchased property that had, you know, hazardous waste requirement to be cleaned up, and the town said, oh, we're just going to buy it as-is, we're not going to do any, we're not going to put any of that burden back on the buyer. And then the town, on our dime, had to, had to remediate those, those hazardous waste issues. I wonder if we have any preliminary results on, I guess, what KBA mentioned, the ground penetrating radar, or any of the boerings, or geotechnical tests that have been completed? And if we don't have any of those answers now, when will we have those? And is that something that the town can get the seller to, to pay for, since we're paying such a premium?
Mary, this is Susan. I could speak to the environmental, and I know that KBA can speak to the findings on the geotech.
Please.
Okay, so on the environmental, we have, we have more than preliminary. I'm happy to say, we worked with our environmental consultants. They're one of the consultants that we were able to bring on very early on, right after town meeting. So we had a jump start on that work. A Phase 1 investigation was done. It didn't find any recognized environmental conditions, which is the term of art, but because of the history of the shipyard and the uses that used to be in the shipyard, and there are other areas of the shipyard that have had recognized environmental conditions, they recommended a significant amount of testing in a Phase 2. That included, because of the slab that's there, and so it's not readily apparent what's underneath the slab, that included a ground penetrating radar. So over the last month, say, five to six weeks, four to six weeks, first, there was a ground penetrating radar study that was out there, where they could literally kind of x-ray for, through the slab and see what was there. This found evidence of underground utilities, some foundation remnants, but it didn't find any evidence of any underground storage tanks or something that would be like, oh, wait, there was a tank with, you know, oil that's been leaking for the last 80 years since the shipyard shut down, nothing like that. But based on the ground penetrating radar, the, the environmental consultant coordinated together with the geotech consultant, which was part of KBA's team, in order to find efficiencies for doing borings. So they were able to use the same drilling rig and kind of share the cost of that. That helped bring down the cost of the feasibility study a little bit. And over three days, a number of borings were done, both through the slab and around the slab, mostly on the Essington side, and that included a couple of groundwater monitoring wells. And the good news for that is, we have, the Phase 2 environmental report is back. And basically, what they found is, again, that there's no recognized environmental condition. There was nothing that came up in the soil, the soil samples, and there was not, the groundwater was very deep, I want to say 25 feet or deeper down. And there was some trace chemicals in there, but nothing that was reportable. So the good news is that all of the environmental test, testing, which was somewhat extensive, and I even went back, because I was trying to figure out if there was ways to save money on the feasibility study for the town. And I was asking, do we need to do all these borings? Can we do a few more? And they're like, listen, we can do it all now, we can find out what's out there, or we can pull up the slab and find it later. So the consensus was to know what we were, the town was buying, and to get the testing done now. So that's, that's kind of the positive report I can make on the environmental. And then I think, Sean, maybe you could speak to the geotech and what they found about what that tells you about the, what would be needed for the foundation on the building?
Correct. So to confirm what Susan just said, yeah, the groundwater is about 25, 26 feet below grade, which is, which is quite low, so we wouldn't be dealing with that. But the thing that, the geotechnical report, report came back, based on their borings that were taken, they did realize, or did acknowledge fill, which you would find in any below-slab installation. But with our design and how we're anticipating utilizing the site, all that general fill that needs to come out anyways, for our lowest level, if you will, will be eliminated, bringing it back down, or digging out the site because of our lowest level. So we'll be taking out a large portion of that general fill that would have to disappear anyways. So that's, again, further news, good news related to the findings of the geotechnical report. So, and nothing else beyond that, you know, no ledge that was found in the borings that were taken. I think that the next level of any further investigation would just be, as we get farther and farther down the road into true design engineering, structural engineering, foundation, footing designs, if there's any, if there's going to be any need for underslab drainage, that comes into somewhat of a similar question that Ms. Black had earlier, but the stormwater management, underslab drainage, you know, this is all, this has all been found now at this stage, with the environmental survey that's been done, plus our geotechnical engineering that's been done. There'll be a little bit more investigation, a little bit more invasive test pits that, that come after the fact, once, once the property is owned, if that, if that is what, what is decided. But again, you know, nothing has jumped out that is out of the ordinary from where the investigation and the borings that have been taken place thus far.
Okay, great, thank you.
I see that Andy McElhenney has his hand raised as well. So let's ask Michelle unmuted, Andy.
Hi, thank you all, the great work and the speed with which it's been done. I have a couple of quick questions. When would the building come online, if everything went as you would hope it would? And, and what would be the expected life of that building? Useful life as a fire and police facility?
So, buildings of this size, we're looking probably, if bidding of January of 2022, we're looking at a 16 to 18-month, probably, building timeframe. So about a year and a half from January of 2022, if that's, if that's the start date. You know, so that brings you into 20, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm a little late for doing a little math, sorry, 20, the end of 23?
Middle of 23.
Middle to the end of 2023. And life expectancy, what we're, what we're building, buildings to today's, you know, 60 to 75 years, you know, and we, we always look to, to more, call it robust materials, but, you know, masonry, stone, materials that, you know, last much, much longer than, than your traditional, or some traditional materials, obviously with being the proximity to the salt water. You know, we'll, we'll look for materials and utilize materials that, I wouldn't say like salt water, but are more accustomed to the salt water atmospheres, consistent to those atmospheres. So, but a 60 to 75-year life expectancy.
Thank you. And, and of course, the, the building, well, called a public safety facility, in fact, will be the police headquarters and only police station, but it'll be, has been zoned an auxiliary fire station manned probably by four firemen at any given time. Is that, is that right?
Yes, I believe, Chief, we, you can help with that part of it, please, Murphy.
Yeah, that's correct. So the minimum number that normally would work down at that station is currently four. There are times that we may either staff with additional people. So if there was an example, a storm coming through, then we may have six people working down there. Or there are times when we have someone that's training, then there could be five people there. So it ranges from four to six. The current plan is to, that Casselboos is using was for six bedrooms for the future, so.
So, how many bedrooms are there? I'm sorry. Six for the future?
So six, six is the current plan. But again, we haven't really, you know, we've had discussions about, do we add a seventh one that could be, you know, just as an extra, or how to handle that. But right now, the plan is showing for six.
Okay, thank you. And my last question is, Chief, I know, I know you have a fireboat, and I, I don't know where you're going to store that. I hope it's not in this facility, but maybe it is. But, which raises the larger question of, could you, could you add a storage facility for the Harbor Masters boat, as well as the fireboat, to this facility?
I'll answer the, the first one relating to the fireboat. Currently, it's actually kept in the water, right up there at the shipyard for the entire boating season. We're actually probably going to pull it later on this week. And then it's normally kept at headquarters. So yes, we are actually planning on keeping this here in the future, because it's an ocean boat. It's not something that we could pick up and, you know, put into one of the ponds or anything like that. So it just seems to make sense that, you know, if we needed to launch it during the wintertime, then it would be closer to the water, and we could launch it right at the shipyard up there. So that's for the, for the fire department boat, and there is space in the apparatus space behind the engines and all that stuff to keep that. I can let either Chief Jones or someone else handle on the Harbor Master question.
Chief, would you, would you like me to do that?
Sure, go ahead, Tom.
So, Mary, is that all right, if I jump in? So, thank you for the question, Andy. I just, the, so a couple of things come into play there. If you know the, if you remember, the Harbor Masters is currently leasing space over at the MBTA's facility, right on the water. That could change with this. There is extra office space in this building to allow for that, if that's something the town wanted to try to do and prioritize. And, and I believe, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe, or Sean, but I believe that the facility was designed to accommodate the Harbor Masters boat if needed.
That is correct, Tom. That is, part of the plan is to accommodate the Harbor Masters boat.
And could it accommodate the Harbor Masters boat as well as the fireboat?
Correct. So as the Chief Murphy noted, that the, the fireboat would be kept in the apparatus bay, or has the potential of being kept in the apparatus bay. And then the Harbor Masters boat, you know, we're, we're still, it's, it's in the plan, it's working through the plan to, to house it here on this property. It hasn't been fully defined as of yet, but with the, with the additional parking spaces, as I was noting earlier, and then that covered portion of the police cruisers area, it'd be something in, in, in around that zone. We're still working through the, the dimensioning of the boats and the trailer size, and we were just trying to get all that configured. But there is that, those covered spaces that are spaces allocated on the property. An additional accessory structure is, is, as you saw on the site plan, it's, that is a challenge. So it wouldn't be an additional accessory structure to the property. You'd be utilizing the existing covered carport to, to have a covered structure for the boat, if, if that's where.
Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
I see George Dennis has his hand raised as well. If he could be unmuted, here we go.
Thank you. This may be a little bit early in the game, but are solar panels planned for the facility in order to provide some electricity there?
Mary, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please.
Sure. So, thank you, George. The KBA team and I did speak about that. That, you're right, that, that is a little bit early. It's a conversation that I'm sure will take place during the planning of the facility over the course of the next year. The one thing I would point out, and I have personally extensive experience with this, with another community, but if we were to do that, we could do that utilizing some power purchase agreement approaches that other towns are using, and be able to build those, those solar panels at no cost to the town, and, 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 and put them on top of our, of the new facility. So it's definitely an option, I think, that we should look at, and, and I would expect that the building committee would want to take that up. Todd or Sean, if you guys want to add anything?
That was perfect, Tom. The only thing I would actually say is, it is planned, or add to that, is it is planned, because there is a requirement inside of the building code that all roof structures be solar panel ready. So that, that is actually a building code requirement, that we make the buildings ready for solar panels in the future.
And I don't see any other hands raised from edcom members. If I'm missing anybody, wave furiously. In which case, I'll turn it back to you, Mary.
Thank you, Bob. At this point, I'm going to open it up to members of the public who wish to ask a question or make a comment. When recognized by the chair, please give your name, and please give your address. And if you could, please direct your questions to the chair, and then as needed, we'll bring other people in to answer them. Is there anyone who has a question or wishes to make a comment at this point? Martha Buick.
Thank, let's see, thank you so much. And I came, tuned in for a different reason, but this has been a wonderful presentation, and very, very interesting to see the new plans. And as you were talking, a couple of questions did come to my-
Martha, could I just please interrupt and ask you to give your address for the record?
Oh, sorry, Martha Buick, 34 Otis Hill Road.
Thank you very much.
Yes. My first one is, have you had your discussions with Mass Highway yet? Route 3A is, of course, is such a congested highway, especially at peak hours, both morning and evening. And I just wondered what your conversations with Mass Highway had, had produced. That was number one. The second one was that I was looking for a discussion of, of, of communications center at the new combined facility, because there's so much that's being done remotely, including surveillance, and including the relationship with the regional Lab 1-1 Center. And now, of course, at the shipyard, you have the, the Boston Harbor facilities, where there is surveillance or sort of management or oversight of Boston Harbor by both the Harbor Master on the navigable channel where the boats operate, as well as by DCR. And I was just wondering of where, what, to what extent there was going to be a communications center that would be not only covering Hingham, but also possibly linked in with the region? And then further, I was wondering if there was any discussion of the future of the linkage of things like drones, surveillance, helicopter places to land, things of that sort.
Tom, do you want to start with the 3A question? Is that best answered by you?
So what I would suggest is KBA answer the 3A question, and perhaps Chief Murphy could speak to the EOC, and, and how modern EOCs are utilized and used from a regional perspective.
Okay, why don't, why don't we start with the 3A question? And Todd and Sean, if you could perhaps address that, please?
Sure. So again, with our traffic engineering consultant, Jeff Derrick, along with, you know, I know maybe many of you are familiar with him as well. So we have had those preliminary discussions on the timeframe, on any sort of applications or variances that are necessary along 3A, along for Mass Highway. He, he's quite familiar with the department, along with the procedure and the application process. I believe, Todd, or Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was about a six to nine-month kind of application process, permitting process. So, once, it's a long timeframe, you know, so I think as we engage this next stage, hopefully, as it, hopefully will pass through, through town, this will be something that will be engaged right away, just so that we're, we're not, we're not holding up that process. But it'll obviously need some, some, you know, civil engineering, some of the further design, further discussions, but that's, that's the next level of coordination and design. But we are quite familiar with the timeframe necessary to, to achieve any of those, those that permitting and application process.
And Chief Murphy, perhaps you could speak to the, the other question about the EOC?
Okay, so currently, our headquarters, Hingham Fire Station Number 1, is the current location of the EOC. And we've discussed this. Originally, we were not actually considering changing that. But based on some of the preliminary designs, the training room at the new station here is bigger than what we have currently, and the building will undoubtedly have better and more modern communications and everything else than what we have at headquarters. So one of the things that we're considering doing would be to make this new building the primary location, and then have our current station headquarters serve as the backup. Because all communities are required to have a primary and then a secondary location. So, you know, currently, the primary is our station, and then the backup is a town hall. So this would actually benefit us to, you know, kind of flip-flop that and use it for, you know, again, with more modern communications and all that type of stuff. And depending upon what the scenario was, you know, we may still want to use the other location, or we may actually want to use both. But we would have that ability to do that, so.
And then another thing is that I'm not sure how many people in town know, I believe the Hingham Shipyard is part of the Boston Harbor Re security triage area in case of incident. And again, I don't know whether there's some way to formally recognize that or- or have that be part of this facility. I mean, it was a backup area when the Democrat National Convention was in town. In case of any incidents, this was the backup area.
Which was really, which was very unique, because they never actually really contacted anyone from the time. They just put that down on their plan. And they never actually told us until it was like the last minute that, hey, this is part of their plan. We found out that they were planning on basically offloading boats in the shipyard, and then it was going to be up to us to deal with it. But they never actually included us on that. So, but yeah.
Great.
Yes, you're right.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or wish to make a comment? Okay. Before the board goes on to its votes, I just want to make the public aware that our board tonight will be making procedural votes relative to the special town meeting. We will actually take this matter up again next week and intend to vote on this article next Tuesday. And Bob, I believe that the advisory committee, am I correct, that you will be taking this up again and voting on the 21st?
Based on our schedule, Mary, and we are going to recess and continue our advisory committee meeting this evening in order to address matters such as that. But I anticipate that we would probably vote on the 21st to allow for the orderly formulation of a comment and to be in a good shape for the warrant.
Okay. So, for interested members of the public, there will be two public meetings next week between the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee, where we will be discussing this matter further. During both of those meetings, we would invite questions and comments from the public. I would also note that people can email us. The advisory committee has an email address, as do all three members of the Board of Selectmen. And we are happy to hear from people either in the meeting or, you know, or by email. Bob, did you want, before we take up these possible votes, did you want to recess advisory now? Or do you want to wait until we do the procedural votes?
I thought it would make sense for us to wait until you did the procedural votes and then recess. And I do expect, Mary, next week, that the advisory committee will probably post again concurrently with the Board of Selectmen meeting, because I suspect we would have a quorum of our members listening into your discussion.
Terrific. And I think we would probably do the same. So, to the extent that there were questions from the advisory committee, you know, we would be happy and be prepared to respond as well. So, we'll be seeing a lot of each other over the next couple of weeks. If we move on then to item agenda number six, this is the discussion and possible vote regarding the scheduling of the special town meeting and warrant. Tom, could you maybe just give us an overview of this vote?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Sure. So, if the board were to decide that this is a worthwhile project and wants to put it before the town, this is the proposed date. We're proposing November 21st with a rain date of November 22nd. We're proposing that that be done at Hingham High School. And I can tell you that if we were to move forward with this, I have begun plans and discussions with the school department, it would be done very, very similarly to how we did the last pandemic town meeting that we held in June. We would do it with the same kind of setup in the same facility, in the same manner, hopefully without need for cooling and cooling stations, perhaps maybe a warming station or two. But this is the tentative plan that I think works.
And this would be a 12 o'clock start?
It would be. That's right.
Okay. Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom about this possible vote?
Tom, just to be clear, I don't think you said the word outdoors, but this would-
Oh, sorry.
-plan to be an outside, outdoor meeting. Is that correct?
Outside, outdoor meeting at the, what is it, Michelle? The multi-use field. I've been told it's not a football field. It's a multi-use field. And it's, we would do it very similar, Joe, in that outdoors, but with 10-foot spacing between the chairs. We would try to maximize the safety for the community. There'll be hand sanitizing stations everywhere if we do this. It will be very much the same as before. Multiple parking locations. We'll try to minimize queuing at the check-in locations, et cetera.
And am I correct that the meeting, assuming the weather permitted, be outdoors on the 21st? If it rained, it would be outdoors on the 22nd? If it also rained on the 22nd, would it then be indoors on the 22nd?
Yes. So, Plan C, just because that's what we do here, Plan C would be indoors at the high school on the 22nd. If it were to rain, if we had to rain out the entire weekend, the 21st and the 22nd.
Yep. And this is-
And that would be, and just, I'm sorry, Joe, that will be, again, socially distant seating in both the gymnasium and the auditorium. And we will make every effort to maintain the safety of both the folks coming into the facility, but also the folks using that facility on a daily, on an ongoing basis.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, any questions?
Questions, Mary. Thank you.
And Tom, could you just please reiterate why we're doing this in November? Because the purchase and sale, I mean, just the relationship with the purchase and sale agreement, I think is, just bears repeating.
Sure. Susan, can you tell me the date? Again, I always get it off by a day.
No, the town diligence period for all contingencies expires on November 30th. And there's an outside closing date under the purchase agreement of December 30th.
Right.
So, if we don't do this before November 30th, we lose the parcel. Okay. Is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment before the board takes its vote? Okay. I see none. I'd accept a motion.
I'll move to call a special town meeting to be held on Saturday, November 21st, 2020, at noon at the Hingham High School, with a rain date of Sunday, November 22nd, 2020, at noon at the Hingham High School pursuant to Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Article Two, and Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section Nine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. And the next item is the discussion and possible vote regarding the insertion of Board of Selectmen warrant articles for public safety facility into the warrant. Tom, again, could you please just give an overview of this?
Sure. So, this is a, so this is an article that would facilitate the purchase of the property. Please, everyone should remember, that is what's before us, is the purchase of the property and the ultimate, you know, the final design effort of a facility. This is not the town meeting, where we would be discussing the cost of the, and asking the town to fund the cost of building this facility. This is to purchase the property and to design and create construction and bid documents, should the town decide to move forward at a future date. So, that's what this does. It also allows for us to borrow through a bond anticipation note for that, for that, for that, those funds. It would also allow us to take on any easement that would be needed to facilitate the effort. But that's the idea.
And I would just note that because this is a borrowing, it will require a two-thirds vote by town meeting.
That's right.
And Tom, this will be non-excluded debt?
That's right.
Okay. And I know that both council, John Cofflin and Susan Murphy, worked on this warrant article and the language on it, so we thank them for that. Joe or Bill, any questions for Tom with respect to the vote that we're about to take?
Tom, if you could, I know we're not voting on dollar amounts here, but if you could just refresh my recollection on what would be the purchase price on the property and what would be the projected number for doing the further design work?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Joe. I should have said it just now, and I was remiss in doing so. So, the purchase price, to refresh everyone, the purchase price agreed to in the PNS is $5,475,000. And the anticipated, the anticipated, or, yeah, the estimated cost of design and construction and bid documents to bring us to a point where we are ready to hire the contractor to begin the work is approximately $3.3 million, thereabouts, bringing the total to, in the ballpark of $8.8 million for this year's town meeting vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Tom, just a follow-up. To the extent that I know that $3.3 million includes contingencies, it's based on the design that we've seen, the committee will only expend the necessary funds to get us to that stage in the process. So, this is a, that 3.3 is kind of a not-to-exceed number.
Yeah. What you don't want to do is ask town meeting for a number and then find out, you know, five months later or a year later that that's inadequate, then you're going to go back and ask for more. It's inefficient, and I think the town would not appreciate that. So, the idea is to be conservative, estimate on the high side, and then only spend what's absolutely needed.
Thank you. Bill, any questions for Tom?
I had a question about the form of the article, but I know that Tom, I spoke with Tom earlier, and he said that town council reviewed it and okayed it, so I'm comfortable with it. Thank you.
Okay. Any member of the public have a question or wish to make a comment before the board takes its vote? Okay. I see none. I'd accept a motion.
I would make a motion to open the warrant for the special town meeting on Saturday, November 21st, 2020, and assert the following article. Article one, will the town vote, one, to authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase the property located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts, in accordance with the terms and conditions of a purchase and sale agreement between the town and 291 Mystic LLC; and two, to authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to grant and accept all easements necessary to develop said property; and three, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all contracts necessary to design and obtain construction bids for a new public safety facility to be located at said 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts; and four, to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be used by the Board of Selectmen to acquire said property and to enter into said contracts all upon terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interests of the town or act on anything relating thereto, and to close the warrant for the special town meeting on Wednesday, October 14th, 2020, at 4:30 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm going to make a suggestion, Bill and Joe. To the extent that any of us have any additional questions for Kesselboos, or Tom, or anybody, that over the next day or so, we channel those through to Tom, who can, you know, get them to the right people so that next week, when we have our hearing on this matter, we'll hopefully have the answers. So, I know I had some questions that KBA said they'd follow up on. I'm going to write those down and email them. And I just encourage everybody to do the same so that we can, so that we can have a good and complete conversation next Tuesday. Bob, do you need to take a vote to recess?
Don't think we need to vote to recess, but I think the advisory committee will stand in recess for five minutes now, and we will be resuming our meeting in a separate Zoom meeting, which has the same call-in number as this one. Meeting ID, which is posted on the website, is different. It's 872-1575-3397, and there's a passcode 057306. All of that information is available on our posted agenda on the website. Thank you, Mary. It's been delightful participating jointly with you this evening.
Thanks, everybody. We'll see everybody next week. And to members of the building committee, thank you for joining us tonight. And again, thank you for all the great work that you've done, and we appreciate your continued efforts. Next item of business on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. Tom, I think that's you?
It is. Thank you. Mary, tonight's a little bit different. Michelle has prepared a slide to help give the public a chance to kind of follow through with the main points of what I'm going to be saying. Just, I know sometimes I, you know, we, there's a lot said in these, and I just want to make sure that this is clear to everybody. This is, in particular, this is a bit of a more in-depth COVID-19 update than I've been providing. But there are reasons for that, and I think the public needs to understand that. So, let me, let me go ahead and read through my update. I will not be reading the slide, by the way. I'll be reading through an update that will, that is highlighted by the items in the slide. So, "As of today, the Department of Public Health is reporting 137,565 confirmed cases in Massachusetts, of which 10,380 are in Plymouth County. As of last Wednesday, the Mass Department of Public Health was reporting 352 confirmed COVID-19 cases in Hingham, an increase of 14 cases over the previous week. Hingham remains in the yellow category for now. However, we are seeing a troubling increase in COVID-19 cases in privately-run team sports, especially indoor sports like hockey, basketball, and indoor soccer. The Hingham Health Department has had to quarantine entire teams participating in privately-run indoor team sports, along with family members of participants and some spectators who were not practicing social distancing. These cases from private indoor team sports are impacting Hingham Public Schools, as well as the broader Hingham community. Cases are being analyzed by the state cluster epidemiologists, as they are also seeing household transmission at both the state, at both the state and local level. To the extent you or your child are participating in higher-risk indoor sports, please practice social distancing and wear masks to the extent possible. Furthermore, if you receive a call from a local or state public health official for the purpose of contact tracing or imposing a COVID-19-related quarantine, it is vital that you cooperate and follow their guidance. Ignoring an order to quarantine or declining to share information for contact tracing puts everyone in our town and in our schools at risk. We need parents to stay vigilant and help us prevent further transmission. In some cases, privately-run sports teams are notifying participants of a potential exposure. If you are notified of a potential exposure, please stay home until you hear from the Hingham Health Department or the Massachusetts COVID-19 team. They should contact you with quarantine guidance within 24 hours. It is very important that you stay home and do not go to school or work until you hear from them. If you don't hear from them within 24 hours, please contact the Hingham Health Department at 781-741-1466, or email them at healthdirector@hingham-ma.gov during business hours, or the Massachusetts COVID-19 team at 857-305-2728, or 211 during non-business hours. We are all very concerned about these developments. Please work with us to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 in Hingham. If you are sick or have been identified as a close contact of someone diagnosed with COVID-19, there are several steps you can take to- there are several steps you can take to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 to other members of your household. The DPH recommends the following measures to separate yourself from others. One, stay at home and use a separate bedroom and bathroom if possible. Two, stay at least six feet away from other people in the house. Three, do not leave your house to go to school, work or run errands. Four, do not have any, any visitors to your house during this time. Five, wash your hands frequently with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Six, do not eat, excuse me, do not share eating or drinking utensils with anybody. Seven, cover your mouth and nose with a tissue or your sleeve, not your hands, when coughing or sneezing. Eight, clean surfaces that you touch every day with a household disinfectant. Nine, monitor your health every day. Ten, if you get sick with fever, cough, shortness of breath, or other signs of respiratory illness, call your healthcare provider and tell them you have been exposed to COVID-19. Eleven, if you need, if you need to see your healthcare provider, do not take public transportation, taxis or ride shares to get to your appointment. And twelve, make it, make a list of everyone you have been close to, identified or defined as within six feet or for at least 15 minutes since you got, since you first got sick. Those people have been exposed to COVID-19 and should be asked to self-quarantine. The CDC offers additional recommendations on their website on what to do if you are sick or if you are caring for someone who is sick. Mary, I would say, I would like to point out that I think we have, Michelle has a Halloween update relating to the COVID-19. I would ask maybe, so people hear a different voice, I'll, I'll ask Michelle to read this one.
Thank you very much. So to the extent that individuals and families feel it is safe to participate in Halloween activities this year, please follow the state and federal COVID-19 guidance. The Department of Public Health offers the following recommendations for a safe and healthy Halloween. Number one, wear a face mask or face covering, which if you choose the right costume, should be pretty easy. Number two, observe good hand hygiene, including hand washing and use of alcohol-based sanitizers with at least 60% alcohol. Carry hand sanitizer and use it often, especially after coming into contact with frequently touched surfaces and before eating candy. Number three, refrain from touching your face. Four, stay home and refrain from Halloween activities, including handing out Halloween treats if you feel unwell, you have tested positive for COVID-19, you have been exposed to someone with COVID-19, or you have traveled to or from a state that is not classified as lower risk within the last 14 days. And number five, maintain social distancing of at least six feet of physical distance from all other participants who are not members of the same household. The CDC offers additional guidance on lower, moderate and higher risk Halloween activities on its website. We posted this Halloween information on the town website in the COVID-19 Update Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Bill or Joe, any questions for Tom or Michelle regarding the COVID-19 update?
I, I do have a question for Tom. You, your, your slide and your presentation talked about, you know, getting calls or contacted by the state in terms of contact tracing. How do we know if the call is genuine and it's not some scam?
Good question, Joe. I don't know the answer. I will find out. I would expect that they are, that they would notify themselves as from the, the Contact Tracing Center. I know we are using the CTC right now because of the number of, the number and amount of contact tracing that our public health department is being asked to do. We don't have the staffing to, to fulfill that, that need right now. So we're relying on the state to help us with that. I will confirm with, with Susan Sarnie and, and find out for sure how they, how they recognize, identify themselves on those calls and I'll report out both on the website and next week.
Chief Murphy.
I think Chief Murphy had.
Nope, maybe Steve.
So they actually, they have had that information out on the state's website. And they tell you that if you, the phone number, I believe, should come into you and it should specify that it's CTC on it for Massachusetts. I'm just looking up on their website right now. But they do actually have, the, it, it says that it should either come through as DPH or CTC on your phone, I believe is what it is. But I can provide that, or we can get that additional information. They started that a while ago and I don't remember completely off the top of my head tonight, but.
Yep. I mean, just so many residents in, in Hingham and elsewhere, we've been warned, you know, don't believe what you're hearing on the phone. People call, they ask for information, they say they're from, you know, IBM, they want to service your computer, it's a lie. So there's a lot of skepticism out there. So if we can give people ways to get assurance about these are genuine calls, that'd be helpful.
Yep.
Chief, Chief Jones, something to add?
I, Mary, I just remind people to never give out any personal identifying information. If you suspect there's a scam call coming in, you can always get a number and call somebody back. But the ones that we've seen, people are trying to get identifying information like dates of birth, social security numbers, et cetera. They'll never ask you for those if they're calling for a contact trace.
Thank you.
Mary, I just, if, if I can just follow up on mine, I just found the information on their website.
Please.
It says, this is right on DPH, says calls from the Mass COVID team will use the prefix 833 and 857 and your phone will say the call is from Mass COVID team or MA COVID team. And the calls should be made daily from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then the local, so if Susan Sarnie or anyone from her staff is calling, then that would come up with the local number, which I'm not sure if that's a 804 number, similar to the regular town hall numbers or how that would come through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, any questions for Tom or Michelle?
One quick question, Tom. I'm hearing a lot about cities that are going into the red and the, the consequences of that. And I'm concerned about that and I can tell by the tone of your voice that you're concerned about it as well. What, what would place us in the red? How does it, how does it, how does a town move from yellow to red?
All right. So I don't know the exact numbers. Michelle, if you know the numbers, jump in. It, it requires a percentage increase. My understanding is that it would, it's not a big number. So if we jump from, as I just read, we increased by 14 cases last week. It's not going to be much more than that that would move Hingham from yellow to red. I know that's a concern of the health director. It's, it's a concern of mine. Michelle and I, with Chief Murphy, met with the health director as well as the superintendent of schools today to talk through some scenarios surrounding that potential eventuality. We certainly hope that doesn't happen. But the only way to avoid it is for everybody in this community to start taking this seriously and to, and to follow the guidance.
And I believe it's, it's greater than eight cases per 100,000 people.
Okay.
So basically, it's, it's that, you know, it's that count. So we're in the yellow right now, so we're in the four to eight range. So if, if we have more, if we have more positive cases, we could bump up into red. That happened to Plymouth last week. It's, I think it happened to 14 or 16 communities.
I could tell you, Bill, that Susan was very worried about that and talking to her today. So I would suggest that we're on the cusp.
And just a reminder for the public that, that on Wednesdays is when Massachusetts does release the community data. So you know, we will, we will be getting that data within the next 24 hours. And that's also available on, on websites if people want to look at that. Any, any other questions for me there and my colleagues on the COVID-19 update?
No.
Any members of the public have a question regarding the COVID-19 update?
Mary, looks like Ms. Buick does.
Oh, I'm sorry, Martha? And can you just give your, your address for the record?
Martha Buick, thank you. Martha Buick, 34 Otis Hill Road. A quick question. When I was growing up or a child and we had measles and so forth, we were, our house was signed with a quarantine sign. Has there ever been discussion about having houses or homes with COVID patients in Hingham or any other town carry quarantine signs during the period of quarantine?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Martha. We do get that one a lot. There are HIPAA laws now that, that don't allow for identification of personal medical situations.
Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda is public comment. We set aside 15 minutes for public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes per speaker. We ask that speakers in, present their remarks in a respectful manner, not indulgent personalities. I would remind people that public comment is not a time for debate by the Board of Selectmen and that the board is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment at this time? Martha?
Yes, I tuned in this evening because I thought that there might be some discussion about the threat from the MBTA because of COVID, the COVID situation to cut back either totally or in a substantial way the ferries to Hingham, Hull, Logan and the Harbor Islands, as well as the commuter rail line. And I just was hoping that the selectmen might have some observation to make about what steps we might take to prepare to deal with the, the next month of any whatever hearings or meetings might be held before the MBTA meets to take a vote on what they decide to do.
Yeah, Martha, thank you for the question. Actually, Joe Fisher is going to cover that in Selectmen Reports.
Oh, okay.
Which will be, which will be in the next part of the agenda. But, you know, I was so glad that you're here because you've been so instrumental over the years in educating and advocating and, and helping mobilize. And once again, we find ourselves in that situation, so.
Well, just, just, yeah, what I wanted to say too is that it's sort of a strange coincidence that this week we celebrate the 45th anniversary of the startup of the Hingham Ferry, which was initiated because of the, because of the work of the Hingham Selectmen, who are looking for other ways for people from the South Shore to get to Boston. So the towns in this area that feed into the Hingham and Hull commuter boats, both have the selectmen of all these communities to thank for getting it started so many years ago. So I look forward to hearing what next steps we can all take. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And, and we know that you're going to be very involved in that and we, we thank you in advance for your help in, in, in getting the word out and, and in advocating. I think we've got one thing before we do those reports, which are appointments. And I would, I would like to make a motion to appoint John Falvey to the Affordable Housing Trust to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I'd thank Mr. Falvey. He submitted a Talent Bank application for affordable housing a few weeks ago and that was coincidentally the day after we had received notice that somebody had resigned, so the timing was good. And I would like to make a motion to appoint Ethel Franks to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ms. Franks actually completed a Talent Bank application and was unavailable to talk with us when we met with the moderator over the summer. So we were glad to be able to connect with her last week. She's been a longstanding volunteer at the senior center and we appreciate her interest in the Council on Aging. Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports, Michelle?
Nothing. Thank you, Mary.
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Bill? I was trying to read lips. I think you said I have nothing?
You have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
Yes. So I really appreciate Martha being here this evening. As I spoke at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, that the T has been looking at possible service reductions or terminations of service with respect to the ferry out of Hingham, as well as with respect to the Green Bush Line. And it's, it's, it's more than just a rumor. It's more than just a possibility. It's a serious risk that the town is facing. State Representative Joe Moschino really has been leading the charge to coordinate opposition to those proposed service cuts. I've been working with Joan. I'll be working with Tom Mayo. I have spoken to Martha and I think it's a combination of recruit and volunteer that she is going to be helping us. David Alshuler, who is the Towns Representative on the advisory, the MBTA Advisory Committee will also be assisting us. The, let me just pull up in terms of action items because that's, that's what Martha was asking about. That's something that we need to focus on. And there are a couple of things that are going on. There will be a, a website set up not only for Hingham, but for collectively for a number of towns where information is going to be posted. The number one thing that Representative Moschino is looking to have us do is to organize a writing, a write-in campaign where many of us would be sending messages stressing how important the T, I'm sorry, how important the ferry and the Green Bush Line are to our town, to our residents, to our businesses, as well as to our neighboring communities. There are a number of issues that we need to address. Martha has been instrumental in identifying some of the, it's more than talking points, it's action points. Right now, Hingham has been working for smart development. And part of smart development is having homes, having businesses close to transportation centers. And we've done that at the shipyard. And now there's a threat to remove that as a transportation center. It's a real problem. And there's a concern that if it's halted, it's going to be gone, not for weeks or months, but for years. Another action item that we need to do, that the selectmen need to do, is to be sending a letter to the MBTA and to the Secretary of Transportation. I'll be working on that draft with Martha's, Martha's assistance, with Tom's assistance and with Joan, so that we can make our, our voices heard. There is an MBTA board meeting scheduled for next Monday. And it's also their finance committee. I will be, I'll be asking Michelle to post on our website the information about how citizens can go to that meeting virtually and express their concerns to, to the T board. I think it's very important. This is a situation where the MBTA is likely to act before the end of this calendar year. And the cuts, the terminations of service could be implemented very, very soon after that meet, after the decisions are made in December. So we need to mobilize and we need to act now. The, the criteria that the T has been using is really not considered the importance of the T in terms of how it saves the environment, how it's been taking cars off the roads, how it's affecting services that have incredible ridership that has been performing well in terms of online performance. And actually services that are used to a very large extent by our senior community. One thing that Martha pointed out to me that was that 18% of the ferry riders on the Hingham Long Wharf route were 65 years or older, which is the largest percentage of senior riders on any mode of transportation except for several bus lines. So this is something that affects many of us. And we'll be working, we'll be putting together a letter. And hopefully I'll be asking the Board of Selectmen to endorse that letter so we can get it sent off to the, to the T and to the state. So Martha, thank you for. So Martha, thank you for being here at the meeting, and you will be assisting us in, in working to make sure that any proposed cuts are, are, are basically, I was going to say that they don't happen, but they may have to happen on a limited basis, but that the interests of the town and of effective and sane transportation are respected. Thank you.
Joe, just a question for you with respect to that MBTA board meeting on Monday. Are you planning to attend, or would this be something that we would want the board to post for? How, and, and maybe that's something that you and Tom can discuss?
Right.
And let us know during the week?
So I believe the way it's going to be structured is that the only participation allowed by members of the public will be to send in emails. We will be able to observe, but it's not going to be like this sort of exchange, so that I'm not sure it'd be appropriate for us to be posting.
Okay. And my, my second question is just a logistical one, because I know in Selectmen Reports, we can't have a lot of discussion. Which is, understanding that the next seven weeks are critical, I would propose for your consideration that we have this matter as a standing agenda item for every meeting that we have for the next seven weeks, so that it's not only an opportunity to update, but it gives us all the opportunity to engage, to ask questions, to do a little bit more than we're doing. And frankly, I think having it on the agenda also gives it some additional visibility that'll be important. So if, if you're okay with that, Tom and Michelle, let's just make this a standing item because it's the, the consequences, there's a lot at stake here.
Yeah.
Just like, go ahead, sorry, Joe.
I was going to say that, you know, with, with the Chair's permission, we may want to be inviting Representatives of the T to attend.
Absolutely.
And to have Representative Moschino and our state senator as well participate. We've got a short period of time, and to get the involved, the people who are making decisions involved will be very important.
And Joe, I would also say that, you know, you should feel free to invite any guests to our meeting that you think would be helpful. And what we'll also try to do is to have those items early in the agenda, so that we're respectful of people's time. So, you know, unless we have like a scheduled hearing for a grant of location, we could take it up right away, if that's, if that makes it easier for scheduling.
Yep.
Yeah. I'd, I'd, I'd err on the side of inviting people, absolutely.
Mary, if I could just add a comment? I'd look forward to the date when not everything is urgent in the next seven weeks.
Yep.
I've been waiting for that for five and a half years, Tom, so.
I was going to say four, but you're right, it's been your whole term, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. It, yeah. It's, it's something, it's something. Joe, did you have anything else to add in Selectmen Reports?
No, and that, that's really it. I did want to stress that the boards of Selectmen in our neighboring communities are also mobilizing, and we'll be coordinating with them.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't, I don't have anything else to add. So, you know, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 20th. We'll be taking up the ferry, we will be taking up the warrant article that was just inserted, as, as well as other important business. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mary?
Yes.
So before you do that, I just wanted to get back to the meeting that's scheduled for next Monday, the 19th. That meeting is scheduled for 4:00 PM. And I will, I'm going to read out a phone number that people can call to leave messages indicating their concern about the proposed cuts for the ferry and Green Bush Line. And that phone number, which goes directly to the Mass DOT Board, is 857-368-1655. That's 857-368-1655. And if anyone's going to leave a message, they should leave the message by no later than Monday, October 19th, at 11:00 AM, so that they can be shared, those messages can be shared with board members at the meeting at 4:00 PM.
Michelle, do you think it would be possible to send that out in the Hingham announcements? You know how we can push emails out to people who sign up?
Totally.
Let's, but, let's do that, and then let's also put it up on the website so that it's a handy reference? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I'll get the information to you, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
Great. Okay, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? Mary?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Tom, Michelle, thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you all, have a good night.